My microphone is going to be turned on. Gracious Father, thank you for another beautiful day, a day of grace. Thank you for the privilege that we have to live it, to experience it, and to receive blessings, help to be a blessing to others. Thank you for this institution, for the way it serves our community and our world. Thank you for the leadership that guided us today, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Follow me with pleasure allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First item of business is an opportunity for members of the community to speak for the board. If there is someone present wishing to take advantage of that opportunity, now is the time. Seeing none, hearing none, the next item is to administer the oath of office for a new member of the Board of Trustees. I ask Mr. Eric Armstrong to join me as a party. As you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Eric Armstrong.
Hi, Eric Armstrong.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Board of Trustees, place four.
Of the office of Board of Trustees, place four.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the state of Texas, so help God.
And the state of Texas, so help you God.
Thank you, Eric. Congratulations. How many times have you placed that?
I have no idea. You can do it a whole lot.
Your signature is required on one of these documents I just woke up. I'll bring it to you, I'm sorry.
Here you go.
That's a good one. That'll be beside the hook as well.
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead while you're there.
Can I get one else? Thanks. Next item of business is the chancellor's update.
I'm going to ask for some assistance with my update, beginning with Dr. Garrett, who will talk to us about Texas Pathways.
Good afternoon again. Seven of us had a wonderful opportunity last week to attend Texas Pathways. That's an ongoing commitment that this institution has made to participate with the Texas Success Center to enhance our operations, to look at what we do to help our students. And the theme of this year was mostly about student basic needs, what they need to be successful. The institute was kicked off with a wonderful, wonderful welcome from our chancellor. She was asked to provide the welcome, and she spoke very eloquently about what we do as an institution and what all of the institutions do. And she used a student story and told, which every institution has this type of student, but the success that this student was able to achieve because of the supports that we have at Central Texas College to help him through. And she did note that had we not been going through Texas Pathways, this student might not have been that successful. We might not have been seeing that student walk across the stage at graduation. And that's what Texas Pathways is about, getting a new student on a path and helping them to completion. Our leader for Texas Pathways is sitting in the audience, Veronica Martin. She keeps us on track, she does. She tells us where to go, what to do, and all the data. But one of the things about Texas Pathways, it's not just a conference where you go and you sit there and you're fed information. You participate, you set goals, you look at data, and you work through things until, and you bring it back at the next Pathways Institute. So it's a great opportunity, and we enjoy going every year, or twice a year, really.
Questions by the board?
How does a student become connected? How do you find that student, or a student find you?
Right. A lot of it is with the faculty. We have what's called retention alerts that go if a faculty sees a student struggling. They'll turn in a retention alert, and our student success and persistence team reaches out to the student and tries to help them. We can submit alerts at any time to our student's success and persistence. If you know of a student that needs help, and they will reach out and help the student. Sometimes students seek the help, but sometimes they don't. They don't know what's available. So we do everything we can to help them feel that sense of belonging, feel that they have the supports. I mean, some of the supports that these students, we didn't even think of, like our food insecurities, housing, just books and supplies. They might not be able to make it. This student that Dr. Carter spoke about wouldn't have been, didn't have enough money in the last semester to graduate. And he got the support through our foundation to be able to walk across that stage. It was just a couple hundred dollars. But in the past, he might not have made it.
So is the staff and faculty must be observant?
Yes.
Of what's going on with the student? They're just not a body sitting in a chair?
That's right. That's right. And that's what Texas Pathways is about. And we bring it back, and we share it to the staff and the faculty, what we learned there about the students. We didn't realize how many of our students are in a situation where they need help.
Do we have anything that, like a poster, or an announcement, or something that would get a student's attention so that they know? It's about, I have a rationale for asking that. I have a nonprofit that I work with that I provide shoes for children.
Yes.
And so, everybody's not always observant. Some of my schools may ask for 10 pair in a year. Another one will ask for 200 pair.
Wow.
In a year. So it requires that the person sees their student, more than just looking at them.
That's very true. That's very true.
So is there a poster or some type of notice that that student is not going to reach out to anyone that might read it and say, "I could use that"? Do we have anything like that?
I have to find out. I don't think we do, but that's a good idea. That's a good idea. We should put some stuff out there. I'm not sure what we've got. I will definitely write that down.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Ms. Valerie Payson and Ms. Catherine Winston will talk about the post- eclipse update.
Good afternoon, Chancellor Carter, Chairman Towers, Board of Trustees. On Saturday, April the 6th, the Foundation and the Planetarium staff hosted the 2024 Eclipse Dinner Under the Stars event. We had approximately 120 guests in attendance from around the world. We had visitors from Canada, Germany, Hawaii, California, New York, and some locals. The guests enjoyed an amazing meal prepared by our culinary arts students. The Foundation and Planetarium staff served. They were able to enjoy a show and listen to our staff astronomer, Warren, star talk, and take part in a stargazing. I felt it was a fabulous event. We had a lot of fun. We really enjoyed everyone. And we had some visitors that were wanting to donate to the Planetarium and some of the programs that Catherine and her wonderful staff are putting on. And they were very impressed with our organization, with our staff, with our dinner, and their experience here at Central Texas College. And Catherine has some, we have some photos that we wanted to share with you. This is kind of what the Planetarium looked like that evening, as you came into the event. And this was like the dinner tables, the setup for it.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Winston, and as she mentioned, I am the director of the Planetarium. We recently had the Total Solar Eclipse event. We were open the entire weekend, Friday through Monday. It turned out to be an amazing event on our campus. We spoke to people, as she mentioned, from all over the world. We had a lot of support on campus, and I really just wanted to come and talk to you all about the event, to kind of elaborate just how CTC came together for it. This event was somewhat handed over to us from the city, and pretty much handed to me, since I'm the director of the Planetarium. And we ran with it. But we were able to have departments on campus that rallied around me, and I really just kind of want to go over that with you all. The Foundation being one, Valerie and her team were behind me on everything. They helped with everything that we needed. Another department that we really had assistance with was going to be our facilities. Those guys went above and beyond for me on multiple occasions, even in departments that maybe they don't even specialize in, but they came up to try to see how they could help me. Our supervisor for grounds, Jimmy Gonzalez, and his team came above and beyond during the day of, as well as our supervisor for custodial, Ms. Kathy Flowers. Their team, for a vision that we saw that Monday, came, and they were helping people move our vendors in. They were helping people get it set up and ready all throughout our campus without even being asked. And it was beautiful to see, to be really honest. And I really just want to let you all know that we did this event. It went amazing, and it honestly was a CTC event. It was letting us know that CTC could handle this, and we did it. And it was successful. It was beautiful. We had people from all over the world come. Even when I came back into work the next day, I had emails from those people saying how much they loved being on our campus. They loved how beautiful it was. Something that was surprising for me, we had a lot of visitors from California, and a lot of people that came were educators. But when they came to our campus, they were, even though our campus, they think was small, or we thought was small, they thought it was bigger, and it was beautiful. So CTC was known, and people all over the world were talking about it. So I wanted to kind of share a few pictures that we have from that event. The two pictures in the middle were actually professional pictures done by gentlemen that were here. These were taken right by the Planetarium, and they will actually be published with CTC attached to it as the location. Because we ended up having those clouds cleared. Weathermen didn't think so, but it happened. They cleared, and it turned out to be beautiful. We got to experience that moment on campus. And as you can see, you know, we had the mayor join us. We had some food trucks. Our radio station came on, and she really was a big support for me as well. And that we were able to partner with that, have our live broadcast. So even people that weren't local were able to listen to our CTC radio station during the timeframe also. Oops, too far. So on this one, this is kind of just showing you some different pictures of people that we have. If you look at the picture directly in the middle, we have some people holding a space helmet that we have in staff for us. They are actually from Hong Kong. We have some different facilities workers that are in our pictures, as well as we have chief, which, again, our security forces was one of those other groups that was really behind me and helped me with everything. We needed no questions asked. We had roughly about, I want to say 1,500 people in our largest capacity on our campus. You can see here on these pictures during our event, we had vendors, food trucks, and people just kind of came out and hung out on our grass. Again, we have a beautiful layout on campus, and they just came to enjoy it with us. Especially when the sun started to come out, a lot more people started to come out as well. And this is just our last little picture I wanted to share with you all. We have, we had plenty of news, people that somewhat became family with us because they were with us a lot at the very end. We had people at the bottom, they're from Ireland, they were from Germany. These people came all the way from there just for this event, came to CTC, and now they know what CTC campus is, where we are, and they are part of and real excited about donating to what we have at the Planetarium and our campus. That top picture on the right for you all, the one in the yellow, is actually, we had a very last show on Monday, which was crazy for me, because we were tired by then. But that very last show, a tour bus showed up, and we had 80 individuals from Vietnam that were, or Taiwan, excuse me, Taiwan that came on. They were professors. They came for the whole, they had a whole weekend for this solar eclipse, and CTC Planetarium was their last stop. So it was a really cool, just getting to know them and seeing these people that travel for this. So we, all in all, with everything that we worked with, our staff, and locally, we raised about $30,000 for the Planetarium that will be in our foundation. So it was an amazing event. So if you all got to see it, I hope to. It was amazing.
Not a question, but I want to tell you what I saw. I saw you and Valerie and the policemen serving at dinner. I saw a team working together, no one saying, "I'm not going to do that. That's not my job." I saw you guys put on gloves when it wasn't really your job necessarily to do that, but to help it and to ensure that it was a success and that we will all treat it with tremendous respect. And the food was excellent. Your friend was there, taking care of us as usual. But I saw an amazing team. I was amazed that, you know, I saw the policeman with their rubber gloves on, serving food. And that was wonderful to see. As a board member, you know, the food, you can go anywhere and eat, and you can do that kind of thing. But I was proud of you guys. I was proud of the way you worked together. And no one, if a plate needed to go up those stairs, in fact, my daughter was concerned about you, because you went up and down those stairs probably 20 times.
My feet were hurting.
Somebody help her. But she was delivering food, and I was just so proud of you guys and the way you worked together.
It was, I want to say it was my baby. You know, I started almost two years ago here, and they told me about that event. I'm like, "That's two years from now, whatever." But we've been planning this for a year and a half, and I understand why. And then, like you're saying, I couldn't have done it with all the teams, you know, facilities, the Foundation. Our graphics design students actually created the whole logo for the event. So, you know, like, this is stuff that's pushed out all over the world that we did in-house. And it was just amazing to see our CTC departments come together. It was beautiful. Best day. So I just wanted to share that with you all because it was an amazing time.
We were there. We were there Saturday evening, too. And we were, my wife and I were very impressed on everything. I mean, just like what Brenda was saying, we all ate, we were all at the same table. The chancellor, we, it was really great. Almost wore, like I said, I almost wore the t-shirt, but I chickened out. But, I mean, you know, I even, I saw Mr. Chavez last night, and I told him how everything transpired, and he was impressed. And he was your predecessor.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we just set to keep the standard up high because we're impressing people, and that's what it's all about. And you got $30,000 for the foundation.
Yes, sir.
That's what it's all about. And that's great. That is great. Because I was wondering how far up the ladder you all went. It went pretty good.
Yeah, we did. We did pretty decent. And we have a lot of people that want to come and donate for different adventures that we have coming up for the Planetarium, you know, like some dreams that we have. So they're real excited. It was, it was a really great time to talk to them.
And Warren, when he gave his presentation, that was really good. I strained my neck because the way they were shifting the Big Dipper. But it was cool. It was really great.
He is retiring on me, so I have him for one more Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. He's leaving me. So anybody knows astrology, astronomers that want some jobs, I need one. It was a great time, so.
I know one, but he lives in West Virginia because they left, they were here with us for a whole week just for the eclipse.
Really?
And they left Saturday morning to go back to West Virginia. He brought, he brought his own telescope, like a 10-inch telescope, ground mounted telescope. We got some really good, with mine, I have a Celestron like you all got. And he brought a humongous one. And we were getting some really good pictures out, but he is very good with astronomy. But he went back.
I know, right?
He wants to move down here.
Maybe we can video him in for that.
He wants to move here, but he wants to move out towards Sisava. It's darker, so he can use his telescope.
Anyone else? Comments, questions?
For the people in the community, what is the hours that operation is true?
So we're open every Tuesday and Thursday in the afternoons for matinees that run currently 1:30, and then our last show starts at 4:30. And then we're open every Saturday from 11 to 6:00. So with different shows that we have.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, Dr. Garrett. Welcome back.
May I take a liberty and address the question that came up? I received a text message to support, to answer. There's a survey, a basic needs survey that goes out to all students in a few weeks into each semester. There's also, it's also discussed at new student orientation, what the opportunities we have to support our students. And then postcards are sent out too during the semester. So just wanted to answer, but the poster is another good idea. So thank you for that. Okay, and this is the CTC program status. You all have been anticipating this presentation for quite a while, and I'm so happy to be able to finally have it together to give to you. So this is just a summary of what we have in our catalog right now. We have 11 Associate of Science, 11 Associate of Arts, Associate of Arts in Teaching, 44 Associate Applied Sciences, five Certificate Level Twos, one certificate, I mean, 87 Certificate Level Ones, and three Occupational Skills Awards. The differences between the Certificate Level One and Level Two constitute various hours. And the fact that Certificate Level One, you do not have to be CSI-ready to be able to go into a Certificate Level One, but a Level Two, you do have to be. So I just wanted to distinguish, that's why we have so many more Level Ones and Level Twos. And they all feed, they stack into an associate's degree. So there are two types of reviews that are done. One is a program learning outcome assessment. And that's done because SACs requires it. But the faculty turn in program learning outcomes for the entire program, and they develop these outcomes and then assess those outcomes. But then there's also an overall program review that's done annually, where they assess the enrollment in the programs, they assess the completers, the current labor market trends, program needs, review budget expenditures, and projection of needs. For the CTE programs, they have to, they're required by the state of Texas, by the coordinating board, to have two advisory board meetings from outside stakeholders, business leaders, to give them information on the direction of programs, program updates, additions, deletions. And then they also, every year, look at updates from the coordinating board. There are manuals for courses called the ACGM, the Academic Course Guide Manual, and the WECOM, the Workforce Education Course Manual. Those are standard courses across the state, and anything in the ACGM is transferable to any other state university automatically. And in the WECOM, those courses are standardized at the community college level. A lot of the universities are now taking the CTE programs into their programs also. But this is standardized across the state. And they look at that because there's workshops, and those things are updated so often. The course outcomes, the course descriptions, contact hours. So they have to update that. And the FOS is a field of study. That's a group of courses that the coordinating board has put together from the stakeholders, from the community colleges and the universities, that are a group of courses that will transfer in bulk to the university. So those are things that the departments look at. So what have we done? So effective fall '22, for the most part, this was, this work was done in fall of '21. There was a new communications study, Associate of Arts. We're in the process of deactivating two programs. You notice that those will actually be effective in August of 2025. We can't just shut down a program. We are required by SACs and the coordinating board to do what's called teach-outs, to make sure that any student on the program has an opportunity to finish the program. Sometimes we're able to transfer them to another degree, sometimes we're not. Then we have to have approval from SACs to be able to deactivate. So that's why you can't just say, "I'm shutting this down." We have to go through a major process. And that's why this will not be shut down until August of 2025. It has to remain in the catalog. We don't take new students, but we have to have it available for students to finish. And then they've revised these six programs that was effective fall 2022. Effective fall 2023, they added a new vocational nursing. We had vocational nursing, but they added an 18-month evening weekend program. So that was a revamp. They had to revamp the order of the classes and what was going to take place. You all approved the Respiratory Care Technician. Originally, that was going to be effective fall 2023, but because of accreditation, it's been pushed out to either fall or fall of '24 or spring of '25. We're not sure yet. It's not only SACs accreditation, but it's the accreditation from the Respiratory Care Association. I don't remember what the name of that is, but Tammy Samaripha said we've got to get that first. And then there was another AS in Earth Science and Diesel Tech for Construction, Agriculture, and Outdoor Power Equipment. They deactivated two Associate of Science degrees in the science area and combined that to make that Earth Science program. Effective this coming fall, these are all the new things that are slated to begin in the fall. Lots of certs, which are important, some OSAs, which are important, that all aligns with our House Bill 8 funding model. These are the programs that are revised, and should, the revision should take place in fall of 2024. Six of them there, a lot with the IT area. And this is what is slated to be activated, deactivated in fall of 2025. Again, all of this will have to be turned in and approval received before it will be, but we have stopped accepting new students. So here's some other things that are planned. They're modifying the drafting and design program. They're restructuring the course sequence of the AAS. That's supposed to be reworked cert level one. I'm sorry. They reworked cert level one. They have a new cert level two. And you can see the number of semester credit hours for each one. They stack up to the AAS degree. That's the path for it. Agriculture has reworked what they're doing. They've got a level one that feeds into other certificates that will then feed into the AAS. And they're restructuring the horticulture, and they're adding more certificates there also. And then there's the SMART proposal, which is the specialization in manufacturing, automation, and robotics tech. They're adding 11 courses to the Robotics Engineering Program, and there's new faculty required for this. So we're working on that, getting that kicked off. So that summarizes what happened, what we had planned, what we did. But in the midst of all that, you have to understand that the faculty and the departments come up with this, and then it goes through an internal process also, which is called our Curriculum Review Committee, the CRC. And that is a committee composed of other faculty and staff. And it's very important that the staff are on there and look at this and vote on this because many times, a proposal will come through, but it doesn't meet certain criteria. It doesn't meet maybe for financial aid, or maybe for SACs, or maybe for the coordinating board. So these things are vetted through the curriculum review process. And that is also required of SACs that we document our process for reviewing and implementing new programs or changing the programs. Any questions?
Questions, come ask.
Did that help answer your question about what we do?
Yeah, I just, it seems to me, and I may be, I may be incorrect in my thinking or in my processing. We talk about a number of courses that don't seem to have the gravity or the foothold that we wanted it to. And I understand that, I appreciate the fact that it must continue until a period of time when all the students have either completed that program if they're interested. But there are a number of courses out there, and like I said, I could be wrong. But I've heard us talk about the fact that they were not successful. The enrollments were not where they, we expected them to be when we approved starting them or something like that. And I just feel like I don't, I don't have, I don't know what those are.
Well, some of them were there because the revamp of them and how they reworked them to fall in line with what the advisory boards are recommending, so that they rework it and rework the certificates and feed it through.
So listening to you, I should have the comfort of knowing that any courses that I've heard that were questionable are included in what you just showed me. I should have that comfort as a board member.
And we're continuing to review.
Of course, of course.
Yes, and we will continue to look at those.
But today, as we speak, you have had an opportunity to look at all the courses, you and the group, and decided those were the revisions that were necessary.
Those were the most important at this moment, and there are more. There are more. There are a lot of programs that have low graduation, low completion rates. And we are continuing to look at those. Dr. Bach and Dr. Cook, they're, they're working on looking at that with the departments. Dr. Carter has the list of those low completer programs, and she's looking at it also. I'm not saying that everything is perfect right now. It's a continuous process and we're working to meet the needs of our students. That's what's important. And to get them the education they need to get a good job at the end.
So I see it today on April 16th. When will I see another review?
When would you like to see it?
No.
CRC meets about three to four times a year, depending on what we need to work on. I'd be more than happy to bring it back to you, maybe this time next year. Would that be okay, or do you need it sooner?
It's not about need.
Okay.
It's all about wanting to be informed.
Informed, okay.
I would say, Mike, if you want an expectation from me, I would say when it's completed each of those three or four times, then you tell me what changed.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
That'd make it easy.
Okay.
Okay, after each CRC, we will report back to the board.
Thanks, Lynn.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Dr. Pierce? We have something from the Health Science Department.
Good afternoon, welcome. Yeah, yeah. All right, so I am here on behalf of the Department of Health Sciences requesting approval so that we can purchase some grant equipment from the Nursing Innovative Grant Program that we were awarded from the Texas Higher Education Board. We were awarded $199,978. The max was $200,000. So we did good with hitting that high point, so we were pretty excited about that. And so we are going to be purchasing quite a bit of respiratory equipment. And I kind of listed it there so you could see in the memo that was provided. That equipment will serve our nursing students to enhance their knowledge with respiratory care and illnesses. I think we've spoken a little bit about that before with enhancing their knowledge after COVID. There's been a lot of post-respiratory conditions. Our nursing students need to be briefed on that. And so this grant is going to help supply some of the respiratory equipment that's needed to train those students. And it is stuff that we have identified through a respiratory advisory committee that is needed for all of our students to train on. So the equipment will not only be used for the nursing students, it'll be used for all of our health science students. So we're looking forward to that as well. And so as you'll see, we have, we have three quotes, two vendors, though. Gamarde is one and Pocket Nurse is the other. We frequently buy equipment from these two companies. However, the totals for these reached the $50,000. And so we are here requesting board approval to purchase this equipment from Gamarde and from Pocket Nurse. The total for this equipment is $173,639.97. The remainder of the grant money is going to be purchased with other, other equipment that's not in this price range.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
How long will this last?
The grant?
Yeah, no, the equipment.
Well, we're hoping it lasts a long time. If you'll notice, the Gamarde is actual mannequins. Our mannequins have lives between seven to 10 years old, depending on how much we use them. So in regards to the mannequins, we hope to get a good eight, nine years out of them. But they will be used by all programs. So when we have that much use, sometimes we see a little bit less life in those mannequins.
Are those the sim bodies that we approved several years ago?
No, no, they're not the sim bodies. These mannequins actually were built to specialize in respiratory. So they have more airway anatomy, more capabilities to do chest tubes and those type things. So they're a little bit more built equipped for respiratory care. Yeah, and then we did try to get as much ventilators as you can see as possible. That's why you see refurbished, because we know that we can get a good piece of equipment even though it's refurbished. That saves us a lot of money and we get educator discounts too, so. Any questions?
Yes, question. This grant we've got under $99,000, when does it terminate?
So we have to have the equipment purchased by July of 2024. And so, and we fully expect to be able to do that, is to get the equipment by then. And then the students get to utilize the equipment. We just report every year on how they're using the equipment. Typically, the last time we got this, we only had to report for two years. So they usually let us know. It's usually a two-year turnaround, so.
Okay, but what I'm leading to is you've got about $26,000 left on the table.
Yes.
If we've got $26,000 left and other student body groups do the same thing, if we go back and say, we spent all the money, but we need some more.
Not until we can apply for it again. So we will spend the $26,000. We will spend every bit of what they gave us because it was a predetermined budget. So the budget that we had to submit for this grant had line itemed out everything up to $199,000. So we will spend every bit of that money. This is just, these are the big ticket items. The other stuff was smaller stuff that wouldn't have been on this request. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tammy. Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Harmson?
Good afternoon. As you recall, we had the topic of tuition at the last workshop and board meeting. The recommendation, as a reminder, was for in-district tuition rate of 125 per semester credit hour, out-of-district tuition rate of 163 per semester credit hour. And then there was a differential tuition for a cyber range at $140 per semester. So a couple of quick things. There was a question that was asked about the, the timing of the tuition. April is the last month due to several factors if we're going to go ahead and get the tuition rate, this tuition rate approved. We do need to make sure we finalize our course catalog. We have to make sure that we notify the Coordinating Board of what the tuition rate is. We need to make sure that we have our master fee schedule updated. And then there are several contracts that we need to provide notification to, especially around the military. There was another question around the use of the dollars. The dollars would be used to reinvest, certainly as Dr. Garrett had talked about today in a number of our programs. In Central Texas College, certainly our strategic goals and our priorities. A couple of examples, enhancing student success specifically around driving enrollments, graduation retention, and then trying to work with students to make sure they're successful in completing a credential value, which has certainly been the emphasis around House Bill 8. Fostering growth and improvement within instructional programs. Again, many that Dr. Garrett had highlighted, especially around healthcare, IT, and then the career and technical field, which is an emphasis within the high-demand fields. And then looking at reinvesting again in our facilities to be able to support those programs. And then the final thing was, just to let you know, there was a question regarding expenses. We are in the middle, we have started the budget process. Actually, we were ahead of, ahead of schedule in reviewing the budget process. We're looking at collecting all of the cost information from the departments for next fiscal year. We are looking at specifically ways that we can reduce overall costs, bring the, our costs into alignment in regards to the revenues. Certainly, we're working hard to make sure that we provide the best educational value for our students. And we believe that the proposed tuition increase certainly allows us to maintain a commitment to that, to that effect. So with that, we would be bringing this forward for...
Will there be a change in your numbers from last week that will be presented next week?
Are you talking about a change in the tuition rates?
Yes.
No.
What are you asking for? Give us some numbers.
No, I was just what I told you. The in-district rate would be at 125. Out-of-district rate would be, would go to 163. And then there'd be a differential tuition of 140 for a cyber range.
So we're still going $60 a semester hour.
It would be $20.
For a three-hour course, it's $60 more.
Yeah, for a three-hour course, yes.
What happened to the graduated increase that we approved? We approved that, and then you came back with one that kind of disregarded that.
No, that was, the board had approved a multi-year tuition rate increase. If the, if the board were to go ahead and say, no, they're not going to go ahead and take the, the recommendation to go to the updated tuition rate, then the approved, this would be voted down. And then the, the previously approved rate would be what would be standing and what would be in effect.
If I recall, that graduated rate had a, I'm not sure about the phraseology, but a provision that anywhere along the steps of that, we felt an adjustment up or down need to be made. We gave ourselves permission to do that. Does that sound like anything?
I think, I think at any time, you know, certainly the board has the ability to go ahead and make an adjustment. That, that rate was over a five-year period and was roughly a 5% increase each year, which equated at the time was about $100, which equates to a $5 to $6 increase depending upon, you know, what year we're in that particular, where we're at in the rate schedule. So if the board chooses not to go ahead and take action regarding this, the rate would go from 105, which it is currently, to 110.
To how much?
110.
110?
Yes, that was what was previously approved several years ago by the board.
So if you don't mind me asking, so you came up here and spoke, we went through all this last month. And you came back up here. So why didn't you bring any, any slides or readouts for us to review? So you sell it to us, so we agree with you. You know where I'm coming from? Because when we got, when we got the workshop items, all it said was tuition increase, Mr. Harmson. That's all it said. When you're going to walk up here and say, we need the 125, but you didn't, that's not yours. But you didn't sell us on it. There was, there was nothing to change our mind on the decision we made in March.
Dr. Carter?
Yes, I do. To your point, Mr. Pierce, Mr. Harmson put together a very comprehensive presentation for the March workshop. And it was provided to you all prior to spring break. Several of you reviewed that document. And since the last board meeting, at least one of you has reviewed it multiple times. So there was nothing to add to that, except that maybe you take another look at it and ask us some additional questions. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. The information is still the same. What happened at the last board meeting was that there was a motion for the 125 and the 163 and the other differential, and it did not carry. There was a motion to table, and it did not carry. We have a full board now, seven members, and we are prepared to come back based on the same presentation with the 125, the 163. And as Mr. Harmson said, should it not carry, and should you vote it down, we will go with the schedule. As Mr. Towers pointed out, when that schedule was originally approved, it was with the understanding that if the administration determined that we needed to go up or down, then we would bring it forward. That schedule was approved prior to House Bill 8. And so here we are today. So there is no additional information other than the packet that you were previously provided. And if you have, if there are questions between now and next week, we are happy to sit down with anyone who wants to come to the campus conference room, and we can go through it again. But there is no additional information, and our position still stands. And that's all.
Anybody else? Any questions, comments? And of course, we obviously, we have, we've become habitual to talk about things in a workshop and ask our questions and discuss, and then come back at the board meeting and vote without discussion. Discussion is certainly available at the board meeting. That's, that's not prohibited. It's just the process that we go through makes it a lot simpler to get the meat of the questions asked. So I think the invitation from the chancellor is probably something everybody should take advantage of if they have questions. Thank you, Mark.
Can I ask a question before we dismiss this? One of my points I made, I believe, was the budget. And tuition and the budget, they have to go hand in glove. So the budget that you're working on, that you're preparing, I understand you're working on it. Could you give us some idea of where do you think the budget's going to come in as compared to the budget we approved last year? 20% more, 20% less? Can you give me some idea of where we are?
I just started this week. I started getting the budget request back from the department.
I can hear you.
Step up.
I just started getting budget requests back this week from the departments. Actually, I got most of them in Friday, and they're standard day. So I got a long way to go.
I understand, but just as an overview, does it look like the departments are asking for the same they got last year? Less than they got last year, or more than they got last year?
They're close, they're up a little bit on some things that they probably need, you know. There's, there's a lot of things. I mean, the budget's 5,000 lines long.
You're going to have some, you know, naturally, whenever we have some contracts, there's going to be a cost of increase for various products. Like if we're maintaining, you know, doing preventive maintenance on a chiller or a piece of equipment, there's usually some level of escalation that it's included as well in a number of our IT contracts around servicing those. I think certainly the goal is for us to go and look at it, and if we can try to match. Last year's budget was about $100 million. If we can try to do something similar, at least on the expense side, I think that is, is the goal. But we're also going ahead and looking at where we can go ahead and take in other cuts. I won't go into detail at this point as to what those cuts are, but we're looking at, you know, the opportunity for several million dollars worth of, of additional reductions that we can include within, within the budget. I think that coupled with a potential increase on the revenue side related to tuition, as well as, you know, some other, you know, options, especially if we look at increasing enrollments and what we can do to try to generate some of those, I think all goes into the overall big picture, which is one of the things that I tried to really communicate. This is, it's not just a one-issue, it's not just a one-issue item. The tuition piece is part of the bigger picture when we have to look at, as we were talking about, we have to look at what we can do to control or reduce our expenses. But we also have to look at the revenue side, not only generating additional enrollments, which I think will ultimately help support the college. That's where we've seen a significant reduction, you know, since COVID. Certainly is a reduction in enrollments. But we have to be able to have the available resources. And the intent is, what, what can we do to minimize having to pull money from the budget on an annual basis from reserves to be able to fund some of those other improvements, whether it's buildings, whether it's programs, so that we can go ahead and look at generating additional revenue? So that was the intent of looking at it from a holistic way. We absolutely know, and your message was received around reducing the expenses. That is, you know, certainly going to be a part of the budget process we're in now.
Mark, I have a question for you. I know we can't control how many students actually enroll. We can project. But using the projections you're using for income based upon tuition, how much difference is there between holding the line of what has been approved in the past or this adjustment that you're requesting? That the difference, how many dollars difference is that? And just, just a summary.
Right, so in, in general, based upon some of the preliminary calculations, was about $2.9 million in additional revenue through just the tuition piece. Now, certainly, you know, the more students we get in, that number could potentially go. The other piece of that too, as we had talked about, I think in several different occasions, is, you know, House Bill 8, and then the FAST, the impact of FAST. Because FAST essentially backloads, or House Bill 8 backloads a lot of the revenues because they're no longer paying for contact hours. The time that students are actually in the seats, they're paying us once a student actually graduates. And so there's this transition period. And certainly, as we transition to FAST... And certainly, as we transition to FAST, you know, there's certainly a benefit to the ISDs, but that will have an impact on our overall revenues initially, you know, as we go through that program as well.
Anyone else, any questions?
Yeah, I've got one more.
Oh, Eric, I should look back really forward.
Hopefully, I learned how to talk into this. But I think I would like to get some information on that discussion provided. You know, I'm starting at ground zero here, and I obviously have a lot of homework to do. But if I can contact you and kind of get up to speed, that'd be great.
We would be happy to. Thank you.
My last point.
Sure. You think I trust you, right?
Taxes. I just got my appraisal from the Bell County Tax District. Went up 11.6%. Most of it was agriculture increase on timber value of the land. And I know we've always held the line on raising taxes. But that's one of the places we generate money from. You know, it's not very much because we don't have a big tax base like some other student units. Have you looked at that with, with your budget stuff, anticipating that we may have to have a tax increase? You looked at that, okay. I just want you to know that that's another part of the program.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have considered, yes.
Anyone else? Thank you all for the healthy discussion. Time to consider any topics for upcoming agenda items. Eric, I'll give you a few more minutes than the rest. We'll start the other hand. This is time, would you like for something to be on the agenda or a question you have?
Just want to know when the, when we're going to start talking about the budget and we're going to get into the budget. That's all, that's my next question.
I agree with Ernest, sir. I spoke to budget.
I believe budget and tuition increase is enough to keep me busy for a long.
Eric?
Nothing to add to this point.
You can make your list after me.
I'm writing stove down, so.
Let me remind you that there is a faculty appreciation dinner. Is there still room for people to sign up for that on Thursday, April 25th?
I need to know today. Of course.
Of course. At the death of Mr. Bibby, who was the treasurer of the board, we put off replacing the position of treasurer. And we will have it on the agenda next week to elect a treasurer for the board. So if you have recommendations or volunteers or whatever the case is, take care of that. Remember, the board meeting next week on Thursday, April 23rd, and then the workshop in Tuesday. Why can't I read? I have an appointment with a eye doctor tomorrow. For cataract surgery. Pardon my, Tuesday, April 23rd is the board meeting, and Tuesday, May 21st is the next workshop. And Mr. Pierce has reminded me that on occasion, I have erred by calling for a motion to adjourn, and he reminded me we don't vote at the workshop, so we can't vote to adjourn. So if you're interested in adjourning, you may leave.